With liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence for those who are protecting our freedom in our armed services, those who have lost their lives in doing so, and those who continue the fight. And also please remember tonight, those who lost their lives and were injured in the tragic train accident on Metro North. Welcome to the Village Board meeting, say February 4th at 7:30. Thank you all for coming. Unfortunately, Monday night snowstorm prevented us from having the board meeting, so here we are tonight. We'd like to set the dates for the March meeting. The workshop will be set for Wednesday, February 25th at 7:00 PM. And the board meeting will be on Monday, March 2nd at 7:30 PM. Fire Department Chief Stark.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. I just have about one item on the agenda this evening. It's a new member for Suffolk Hook and Ladder, Michael Barrish. She's a 16-year-old.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. It is 7:30. We will continue the public hearing on the three-hour parking on Lafayette Avenue. Terry?
This is a proposal that the board has heard before. The chief had brought it before the board because there was some concern, some issue with respect to whether or not the two-hour parking was sufficient in the interim. I understand there's been some opposition to it, and the board has that before them to complete the public hearing and make a decision on it.
Would anybody like to speak with regards to the public hearing on three-hour parking on Lafayette Avenue?
Mayor, can I just address what I was...
Please, Chief.
...about? This campaign requests me chamber of Congress, which I addressed to the board seven months ago. Since then, I've spoken to several different parties involved in the chamber. I don't think they have a concise plan of what they want to do. So at this time, I'm thinking maybe it's better just to hold off on anything until we really see what they're looking to do local to them, because I have no idea this time. It's been a couple of times, and I have not heard since.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay.
Anyone else like to speak? Okay. May I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Is there a motion to adopt or to not adopt?
Mayor, I think the last meeting, we continued the public hearing, and I think I might have been part of the reason for that. I mentioned that I wanted to perhaps speak to some chamber members and kind of get a feel for their opinion, which I've done over the last, you know, since the last meeting. I don't think there's a lot of support for this, at this time at least. So I would move to not approve the amendment that would allow three-hour parking.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I second that.
Okay. Mr. Morris?
Disapprove, yes.
Disapprove, yes, okay.
Yes.
Mr. Hagan? Mr. Marquinez?
Disapprove.
Okay. Mr. Byrnes?
Yes, to disapprove.
Yes, to disapprove, and it is carry to not approve the three-hour parking on Lafayette Avenue. Okay. It is a little too early for a second public hearing, so we will go on to Culture and Recreation. Kathy Mills.
Good evening, Village Board. Few updates that we have for the Recreation Department. We have tomorrow, Thursday, February 5th, and next Thursday, February 12th. Art Intention, the Art Class for Seniors will be at the Community Center tomorrow at 11:30. We have this Friday with Chief Osborne, the Dare Dance at 7:00 to 9:00 in the Community Center. We have a tour on Friday from the local Girl Scout troop that will earn a government badge. They'll be coming to Vivid Village right here on Friday at 3:30. We have a Recreation Board meeting next Thursday, February 12th upstairs in the community room. Anyone who's always invited to attend. The Suffolk Fire Department, with Chief Stark, will be having a blood drive next Wednesday, February 11th, at 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM in the Community Center. On February 22nd, it's a Sunday, there'll be a fundraiser, a bingo fundraiser at the Community Center between 12 o'clock and 4 o'clock. And then, I just, I mentioned at the workshop, I just wanted to clear the dates for the events that I proposed for 2015. And if there's any conflicts or anything that would hold us up, if they're okay, then we'll go ahead and plan those for the year.
Yeah, unless the trustees have any conflicts with the dates, I think they're fine, Kathy. Anybody have any objections to any of the dates?
No.
So I think we're okay. Bob?
No.
You're good with them? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And the last item that I'd like to mention tonight, we have a resident, Stephanie Adwar, who is offering to donate a piano to the village. As we can see, the piano that's in the corner there is very, is in very poor shape, so we're hoping to accept the donation from Miss Adwar and replace it with the other piano.
Okay, Kathy, I stand here, you have permission to discard the old piano. We can't discard it. We have to declare it surplus.
Right.
Okay, so we'll walk you through that process with regards to that.
Okay.
I need a motion to accept the donation of the piano from Stephanie Adwar.
Motion to accept the piano.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. And thank you very much to Stephanie Adwar. It's a welcomed gift to us.
Thank you. The next item on my agenda this evening...
Oh, hang on one second. We have to declare the piano surplus.
Okay.
I need a motion to declare our old piano surplus.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item that I have on my agenda is for a proposed fee schedule for 2015. Please feel free to comment on these fees. This was gone over in the need for bringing revenue into the village for rooms that we currently have on the village site. There's a few that I've mentioned. We have Village Hall, Community Room, which is upstairs. We've got Leo Leiden Building, and in that building there's two rooms. We have the Auditorium, which is here. We have the Community Center, which is across the street. And then we have the pool. So I'd like to discuss those items.
Okay. You know what, Kathy? I'd like to suggest that at the next workshop, the trustees, because I don't think anybody's prepared to concretely vote on the fees yet, are we? Anybody?
I think we should talk about them a little bit more.
At workshop, right?
Certainly better than the fir-, not better, don't get me wrong.
Yeah.
I like, I like the breakdown you provided. I would have a couple of questions just about why we're charging more for Leo Leiden than we are for the Community Center. That seems just a little odd.
Right. So let's, does the board have any objection to actually holding this over to be able to have discussion in the workshop, and then at the next board meeting, we can concretely have what our plan is going to be?
That's fine.
Anybody have an objection?
No, no.
No objections. Okay. So do that, Kathy. Thank you.
Just as a note, Matt, for the Community Center, that's $50 per hour, and Leo Leiden will be for the date of the request. So that's just a little change on there.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. Thanks, Kathy. Okay. We have the two more minutes to our public hearing, so ask the village attorney, who has nothing. Police Department.
Mayor and Board, I have several informational items on me, nothing to vote on. In January, this past last month, we had 34 arrests. We issued 173 vehicle traffic assignments here in the village. We have two new patrol officers that'll be starting in our schools. Officer Craig Ostine and Officer Dan Kinnon, I'd like to welcome you aboard today. I just gave Virginia a copy of our village emergency operations plan. I don't know if you saw it yet. All I had to really do is change a few names and a couple of things around. So I don't know if you had an opportunity to look at it. If not, Virginia, I just gave it to you yesterday. I completed it. If you're ready to vote on that, let me know. If you're up to next month, it's not a problem. We have a dare dance tomorrow, which Kathy mentioned. We appreciate that. One of the things I've been working on, but I'm going to come to you next month, is a lot going on with the neighborhood it's been. If we want to amend the taxi law, we really need to change a lot of the statutes about. So I've been a couple of proposals. You decide what you want. You can let me know if you want to add things, take them out. I just want to, I think we really need to address that. And the village, we also have the prescription drug box downstairs. We put that yesterday, the medicine drug mailbox. And what we're going to do is take that and share it to part of, we're going to discard all of the prescription drugs if anybody has it, if they want to be discarded, and get rid of it. Obviously, not the best things to keep around. You can drop them in there, but I'll take care of it. And the last thing I just want to mention, and I pushed this before, we have work emergencies, snow emergencies, anything in the village, information items. We have a program called Mixa. And if anybody wants these services, it's free. You just go to your phone, you dial 888-777, and you put on zip code in the subject where you type in whatever message, 40911, and your information automatically goes out into us. So when we send out an emergency alert, you get it on your phone and your desk. So it's one of the strengths of that, because during storms, I use that a lot, and through any kind of emergency, I'm using that heavily. And we already have, I think we're close to 1,000 residents on it at this point. So I just want to make sure, please, take advantage of that. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay. It is 7:45. We have a public hearing. I asked Rob Magrino to please step in for Attorney Rice.
Sure. Virginia, did you, did you, just want to, can we have a notice?
All the notices were sent out. The registered letters were sent out and everything, and they were posted on the different three corners.
Okay. So we're ready for the applicant to come up. What's happening, this is a reapplication to amend the zone for Orange Avenue. The applicant has submitted basically the identical application that was before the board last year. So the applicant will be coming up and just describing the project again. There are a couple of issues that have to be addressed by the applicant, but we'll leave that to them, and then we'll, we'll talk, and I guess open it up to the public and see what people have to say.
Evening, Mayor. Members of the board. For the record, David Smith, a principal with Planning and Development Advisors, where planning consultants to Orange Avenue Associates, was the applicant. Joshua Goldstein, who is one of the members of Orange Avenue Associates, is here tonight along with Ira Emanuel, who's our project attorney. I know the other day was Groundhog's Day, and if you've ever seen the movie, I kind of feel like we're, I'm back here again to present an application that you've heard several times before. The applicant is applying for a zone change for approximately a 1.4 acre assemblage of properties at the corner of Chestnut Street and Orange Avenue. The zone change would allow for the redevelopment of the property for a, what's called a transit development district. Takes advantage of the proximity of the site to the Suffolk train station, which is approximately 500 feet from the project site. The rezoning would allow for multi-unit, multi-family development. As you recall, the development was submitted back in 2013. It was circulated to your planning board, to Rockland County Planning, a number of other interested and involved agencies, and there were a number of comments with respect to the size and scope and density of the proposed project. And at the time, it was proposed for 111 units, and it was at a six-story height. Since then, the project has been modified to do 92 residential units. It's a mix of one and two-bedroom units, with one of those being a superintendent's unit, all served by 121 parking spaces on-site. Bless you. The plan, the site plan, conceptual site plan, is based on some prior planning conducted on behalf of the village. There was a, an urban renewal plan that evaluated this particular site, and I think it's important to note that during the course of this process, the applicant found out that there are properties that have contamination issues, and they have since applied to New York State under the Brownfields Program for cleanup of that property. So the redevelopment of these properties has a number of specific benefits with respect to cleanup, providing for an onsite population that is in proximate distance, walking distance to downtown, and obviously, each of those households has disposable income, which they will, some portion of which they will spend within the greater Suffolk community. So as part of the transit-oriented nature of the project, the, it's important that several components of the zoning include development where existing infrastructure is in place to support such development, creating a distinct sense of place. And again, the applicant went through a number of iterations with the architects to come up with a fairly distinguishable building program. And it's important to also note that in the event that the village eventually adopts the zoning, we're still going to have to go to the planning board for specific site plan approval to work out specific details. And lastly, the creation and enhancement of walkable neighborhoods. And certainly, I think that's an important component of this particular project, that it is within a very short distance of your shopping district. This project represents a significant investment for Mr. Goldstein. There are a number of major hurdles to get the project out of the ground, including property assemblage and the environmental conditions that I had just referenced. Madam Mayor and members of the board, in the petition that Mr. Magrino had referenced earlier, it contains all of the specific pieces of the environmental review that were requested by your planning staff from F.P. Clark, including an evaluation of how the proposed program could be applied and actually built on-site. We included some conceptual level planning that evaluated potential shadow impacts when the buildings were slightly taller than they are now. And there was a traffic impact study that was prepared and reviewed by your consultants as well. With that, that provides a pretty succinct background as to the proposed action with respect to the zoning, rezoning. So we'd be happy to answer any questions. We'd be happy. Thank you.
I don't know if...
Ira Emanuel. I'm the attorney for the applicant. We just wanted to bring up one other, one other matter. David did a nice job of explaining what the zoning was about. We are, of course, aware that there's a pilot agreement that's out there that is under discussion and which we know the village board is very concerned about and wants to make sure that that pilot agreement is all, is properly considered. We've had some discussions, as you are aware, but there are some details that still have not yet been worked out. We want to make sure we're comfortable with the details. We want to make sure that you're comfortable with the details. And so while we are here for the public hearing, this public hearing has been scheduled, we would not be averse to a continuation of the public hearing at the conclusion of this evening's session to another time, after which we can, during which time we can get the details worked out. We want to make sure that you are absolutely comfortable with every aspect of this proposal before a vote is taken. So we just wanted to get that out there, out in front, so that you're aware of that, so that if you feel that you need that additional time, we certainly have no objection to it, and we certainly understand that you would need the additional time.
Thank you, Mr. Emanuel. Okay. Would anybody like to speak with regards to the zone change?
Michael Curley, for Orange Avenue, Suffolk, New York. I've spoken many times on this issue. I think it's a, I think it's good for the village. I think as we look back to April 17th of last year, when we had our budget vote, we actually included the money from this building of $280,000 into our budget. So we anticipated that for this year, all right? So not only that, but we anticipated the building fees for this budget, okay, into this year, okay? Besides it being, I think, a good project for the village, I think it's, I think it's just as important that we count on these things to, you know, keep us, keep us afloat, all right? Right now, like many municipalities, it's tough times out there, all right? And I think, I think that money, the quicker we can get this done, but of course, then following all the rules and all the laws, the quicker we can, you know, keep up with our payroll and actually pay the overtime to our employees that they deserve, right? You can, you can, you know, it's a lot of money right now, okay? It's a good project. We, you know, as we all know, I mean, I'm hearing, I didn't even read the Ramapo Times article, but there was a, you know, an article there talking about our situation, all right? And there's, I've never, for the years I've come to this meeting, I've never seen so many DPW workers here, right? And it's because they have concern that they may not get paid in their overtime, right? You have the ability to say, hey, listen, let's capture that money. Let's, let's advance this village. And I suggest heavily that we, that we consider it, and we consider it quickly, all right? You know, we've been voted as one of the best police departments in the whole country recently. We're like five out of 626. We have a fire department that I feel, I'm a retired fireman from New York City, that's second to none, all right? It's, you know, it, we have to make, we have to have serious people with serious decisions right now, okay? And it's a good project, so don't hide from it, all right? Don't, don't, let's be decisive, okay? Let's care. Let, you know, we have to work to get our books back in better shape, all right? But it's okay. It can be done, okay? We have that project. For years, I've been saying, let's sell water, let's sell it, okay? And I'll only say water again, because not only will we be getting more services of the 280 for the sale of the building, that's the building right next to it, not only will we be getting, will we be getting building fees in hundreds of thousands of dollars, okay? We'll also be getting extra water fees, all right? We'll be getting extra, we'll be getting extra services that help support the taxes that we are paying, and it shares it a little more, okay? So I'm strongly behind this project, okay? The only thing I would say is that I looked at Mr. Goldstein's car on the way in, his checkbook's in the backseat. I would try to get the check before he leaves, okay?
Thank you. Thank you.
If only it could happen. I just really have two questions. He mentioned 121 onsite spaces. Is that correct? Nothing about offsite anymore?
There's still offsite.
Okay. All right. I just thought maybe something was worked out. And my other question or suggestion is, make sure all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed. I don't think there's a rush to do it tonight, when you see what it involves, whatever you guys decide.
My name is Patsy Widdes, and I live right over here on Mansfield in Suffolk, and I bought my house in 1982. My family, I'm fourth generation in this area. My family shopped in Suffolk since 1898. I am strongly in favor of the Orange Avenue project. I never thought I'd be saying that much on the same side as Ira Emanuel, but lo and behold...
I don't sit in passing.
It can. I've done conservation advocacy since 2000, and that's because I want to save the mountains and all the marble salamanders in there. But this is where development should take place. And the problem that I see that happened in the recent past is that people do not understand that engaging in payment in lieu of taxes agreements is routine business. It's not routine for you and me. You don't give me a payment in lieu of taxes agreement, but it is for business. And I think that politically, we need to educate people, the voters need to understand that this is tax-positive, and it will help the village. And I think that it's very, very important for the future of the village going forward. I am on the Downtown Revitalization Committee, and people are very frustrated. If this doesn't happen, I'm leaving. That is not my view. I remember many, many decades of Suffolk. It comes and goes. It waxes and wanes. This is my home. I love it here. And I do want to, I'm a retired public servant, and I want to thank the DPW for all your service to the village, and I do believe that you should be paid for your overtime.
Would anyone else like to speak? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. This is the public hearing on Orange Avenue. You know that, right?
Oh, no.
Yes. Okay. That's okay. That's okay. That's okay. Would the board members like to speak?
No.
Okay. Anyone else? Nope.
No.
Okay. So the applicant has indicated that a continuation may be warranted here as there are some more details that need to be worked out with regards to the pilot program, in addition to some of the property legalities that they're having. So I guess I would need either a motion to vote or a motion to continue the public hearing.
May I say something before we move ahead?
Sure.
Should there be, since this project and this zone change application and pilot agreement have been in place for a lengthy time now, is there some time constraint that we can put on this? Or are we just going to adjourn it or table it to next month?
No, we have to do it to a date specific.
Date specific.
Correct.
Okay.
I just, I don't know what the board's pleasure is, if they would like to continue it, or if they want to close it and vote, or, I would need a motion to one effect or the other.
If I could weigh in, maybe?
Go ahead.
Yeah. As Mr. Emanuel said, the pilot, there's the issue with respect to the pilot and some other issues that arose really just this past week that we're trying to get passed, and it just wasn't ready for tonight, because I think all those things need to be in place before the board goes ahead and votes on the zone change. I think in principle, generally speaking, there will be something for the board to vote on next time. I think, you know, I'm speaking with their, they have a special attorney with respect to the pilot. We're also consulting with somebody with respect to the pilot. So I think that by the next time this is on, or the next board meeting, there'll be a pilot ready to go, and, you know, negative declaration if necessary, and everything will be in order. I just think because the pilot details still need to be, let's say, smoothed out a little bit, it's just not ready to roll tonight.
It's just language issues, correct?
Correct.
Correct. Mr. Goldstein, is there any specific timeframe that you could offer to the board that you think would be necessary for you to be, to have all of these things in place?
At the latest, a month from now, or any time before. I don't know when your next scheduled village board meeting is, but again, I would agree with Mr. Marquinez. I am, I do not want this to drag out another 30 days, more than 30 days, let's put it that way.
So March 2nd would be agreeable?
Yeah, that would be agreeable, yes.
Okay. So the date specific, if that's the board's pleasure, would be March 2nd?
Yes. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to continuation.
I'll second that. 7:45.
Yeah. 7:45. Ed, do you want to add that to your, to your motion? 7:45, March 2nd?
7:45, March 2nd?
Would be the continuation of the public hearing.
Continuation of the public hearing.
And I have a second for Mr. Morris? Is that correct? Okay. All in favor?
Thank you very much.
Aye.
Opposed?
I would abstain.
Okay. So moved, and we will see you on March 2nd. Thank you. Okay. We will move on to the Department of Public Works, Charles Sawicki. Charles? Changing of the guards. Charles, while, while, before you begin, I just wanted to commend you and your Department of Public Works for the outstanding job that they did with regard to the past two snowstorms. I know there was a lot of long hours, and you guys went above and beyond to assure the safety of this village. And I, as the mayor, I'm proud to have each and every one of you working here, and you did just such a phenomenal job. I received many, many wonderful emails and phone calls from residents, just commending how wonderful you guys did. Squire's Gate was very happy. I know that that was an extra effort you put in there. It's a difficult situation down there, and again, you went above and beyond. So I just wanted to thank, take the opportunity, while I had you all here, to, to thank you very, very much for all that you, uh, you did.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
I, uh, may I say, I also agree with the mayor, and that I experienced the, uh, snowplow operation directly with Joe, I was out on the road with him, and I do also applaud the DPW for their hard work, continued hard work. Thank you.
Okay, good evening. Uh, I am requesting payment authorization for application of payment number seven in the amount of $152,076,000 to Northeast Ram School Construction for the general construction portion of the wastewater digester upgrade project.
Okay, and as always, Charles, you know I asked, did you pass this?
Yeah, the, um, yes, I, um, has, I have had discussions with Michael, and, uh, this is something that we also discussed at the workshop.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Well, I'm confused, we, we have no money, how are we gonna?
Well, this is, uh, this is a, um, a part of the sewer fund, uh, which is, uh, is capital, um, uh, I believe there's a, um, a bond that we have in place, I can have Michael can speak more in detail, but...
Mike speaks on it, on detail.
The money for the wastewater treatment plant was raised by bonds, and the only, and the only thing you can spend that money on is the improvements to the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay. Okay, have a motion, and I have a second, correct?
I think that the second, Mr. Hagan was the second.
I have a motion by Mr. Byrne, a second by Mr. Hagan. Uh, Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Markounis?
Yes.
Mr. Byrne?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried.
Well, I have, am requesting payment authorization for application of payment number three in the amount of $19,718 to HVS LLC for the electrical portion of the wastewater treatment plant digester upgrade project.
Mr. Janito?
Is it?
We're good?
Thank you.
I know I have, I, you know me, I ask for everyone.
It's in there.
Okay, I need a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Markounis?
Yes.
Mr. Byrne?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried.
Okay, we have a training item here that we discussed during the workshop, unfortunately the, uh, board meeting was canceled, um, and this is to get formal authorization from Mr. Don Toscano, a wastewater treatment plant chief operator, to attend the New York Water Environment Association training. The training is offered by New York City, is offered in New York City, February 2nd through the 4th, which is today. Um, train, there's training satisfied in New York State D.C. requirements with the cost of $325.
Well, did he attend?
Yeah, did he go? Yes.
Well, how did he attend it if we didn't approve the expenditure?
Well, we just, we discussed it in the workshop, and, um, I, I believe we, uh, no, I think we, oh, I, actually what, what happened was, the meeting was canceled again, right?
On Monday.
So, so we anticipated dealing with it on Monday, but now we're here on Thursday, so.
Wednesday.
Except that... And this is the only training class?
Well, Mr. Toscano is the chief operator, he needs to get 80, um, hours.
Yeah, but, I, what I asked was, is that the only class that's available?
Well, it's one of the classes that is available, he needs to get 80, 80 hours before June 2016.
How many hours does he currently have?
Well, with, well, um, this, um, training will provide nine hours, and that's all he has currently.
He should just start.
So, eight, 80 hours by June, and he only, he actually has no hours then.
He has...
This class, this class will, will give him nine hours.
Nine, that's right.
So it, it's highly unlikely he's gonna make the required 80 hours.
Oh, he's gonna make the 80 hours, because if he does, he's gonna lose his license, so he will make, he will make the, uh, 80 hours.
Bob, 2016.
But it's 2016, is the, uh...
June 2016.
2016.
Yes.
So it, what I'm saying is, we had two years then to do this, so there was no critical necessity to do it now, given our financial condition.
Well, the, uh, the problem that we had at the wastewater treatment plant, we just finished executing two major, uh, capital projects, and that's one of the reasons why he has no hours, because he's been very, uh, in, uh, directly involved with these capital projects, and we...
I understand all of that.
Right.
Obviously, you have a problem understanding that we have no money.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with that at all.
Well, you, you wanna...
But, um, you know, the, the one thing that I think I've mentioned to you, uh, to you and Mr. Markounis is, you know, a plan is not, is, you know, we have to put a plan together, and a plan is not just not to spend. We need to keep the village going, all right? So we need to, uh, provide, uh, services, and we need to continue to do certain things to keep things running.
You are absolutely right, but this wasn't one of those plans that had to be done at this time without the board's approval, and it's not the first time that you've gone ahead and, and done something on your own or not followed the guidelines that the mayor put down.
Well, now, I, um...
Discussion for another time, Mr. Morris, um, let's get back to the issue at hand. Do I have a motion to approve Mr. Toscano going to the, um, the course that he needs for his, his continuing operator's license in, um, to, uh, per the requirements of the D.C.?
The only thing I would suggest is that being that, had we had our board meeting on Monday, it would have been his first day of attendance, so I'm not sure how, how much before that you knew about it, could we have approved it a month before, would have been better practice.
Well, no, you're absolutely right. I, I did, uh, you know, communicate to, uh, everyone that needs to, uh, take the training for, uh, their operators or other licenses, that I really need to have this in advance. Um, sometimes it's just difficult to do that, because a lot of times, um, these tr, the training opportunities aren't made avail or made, uh, known until the last minute, and, uh, as a result, they, uh, they come to me, uh, with very short notice.
Just with, with that comment, I would, I would, I would make the motion to approve the payment, understanding that he's already attended, right? So someone has to pay for it, we, I, I assume we don't want him to pay for it personally. Um, and I just, better practice in the future is that we have at least a month's notice when practical, when practical, but I would make the motion.
Okay, but I just also want to mention that in the workshop, Charles did bring this up, and, um, there was no discussion at that time that the board would have any problem, knowing that, that the evening of the first day of his class would be, at that time, somebody might have said, hey, you know what, the board means not until at night, if he's gotta start in the morning, we shouldn't be doing this, but nothing with, of that was raised.
Unfortunately, I was sick that night, or I would have said it.
Yeah, so, but Matt, I just want, you weren't there, so I just want to let you know that absolutely no one on the board expressed any concern that they wouldn't be approving this. And many questions...
I'm sorry, there was a concern, there was a concern that was asked, um, in regards to the number of hours, the required hours, and the number of hours, um, the member has, currently has, which was not fulfilled, which I requested.
Yes.
But, once again, bad practice, and I agree, I don't believe the, the, uh, member of the department should pay.
Yeah, and I don't either, and I think that, it, you know, at, at the workshop was the time to be able to, um, you know, express that you were not in favor, that we should have not, um, allowed Mr. Sawicki to put it onto the agenda, because you weren't, uh, happy with the fact that he would need to go to school in the morning, and in fact, our board meeting would be at night. So, going forward, we'll, we'll make sure that that happens. So I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Morris?
No.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Markounis?
Yes.
Mr. Byrne?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried.
Okay, one last item, I am requesting the mayor to accept the resignation of Street Department Labor Elkin Escobar, effective January 30th, 2015.
Okay, I regretfully accept and wish Mr. Escobar the best of luck in his future endeavors.
Thank you.
Tony, uh, yeah, let's have a motion to confirm the resignation.
So moved.
Do I have a second? I know. No, you can't leave.
It's all me.
You can't pull that, then?
Yes, no.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Okay, we are now at the, uh, portion of the meeting where we will have audience participation. I ask if you would like to speak, that you come up to the microphone, you state your name and your address. Thank you.
Scott Brown, Village of Suffolk, CSEA president. For information purposes here to the village board, if the village board would like to address the CSEA members, membership or member on a labor management issue, they should go through me, I have a village email address, and I'm willing to give anyone their, my phone number, that if they request it, they can call me. That being said, at the last meeting, I got up here and I thanked the board members for their honest and, uh, open informational meeting they had with us at the village garage. After the last couple days here, uh, it's came to light that the board members have not been completely honest with, uh, the village employees here. Uh, I could go into specifics, I would rather not, but if, if, if it comes up, I'm willing to answer the questions. The, the thing being, uh, labor management issues are built on honesty. If you can't have a conversation that goes back and forth without I-don't-knows, I-forgot, uh, and flat-out just not telling the truth, this is not a way to operate this Village of Suffolk. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak?
I'm John Mallon, I'm the PBA president. Here to address the board for the non-payment of overtime work. Okay, I'm gonna explain it. Yesterday afternoon, I was informed by the mayor that we would not be getting paid overtime for the pay period. She explained that there was a board meeting and that trustees Markounis, Hagan, and Morris had voted down a bond resolution. As a result, the village could only afford to pay regular payroll, not overtime. After speaking with the mayor, I called Ed Markounis and asked him what happened. He told me he had no idea that we were not getting overtime, that was news to him. He explained that he was unable to get the number, a number of, of the amount of money they had from the mayor or Janito as his cash on hand. He needed this info to vote on what, how much he needed. Trustee Morris told me that if, even if the bonds were approved, the money wouldn't be available for this pay period. That sounded like a reasonable explanation. I went down to the DPW to talk to them, to calm them down, saying that, you know, there was a reasonable explanation for this. At the DPW, I was informed that the village could have taken money from the water fund, but they needed the, the bond resolution to do so. Ed Markounis called Joe Hunt while I was there and told Joe the water fund was never discussed, except for the mayor yelling it out at, when she was leaving the board meeting. Since this time, I have gotten hold of the board meeting minutes, and it shows that trustee, trustee Markounis misled me, that he, he in fact knew there was no overtime being paid out, and purposely didn't let me know about the ability to borrow from the water fund. So this looks as though, with full knowledge, he voted not to pay the overtime rightfully earned. This is a clear violation of Fair Labor Standards Act, and the PBA will be filing an action against the village, seeking compensation and penalties. Okay. Uh, I know you're new to this, trustee Markounis, but I, it's intentionally misleading the union, is a poor practice, and you need to go a long way before you get our trust again. Okay, there's another issue I have. We have an outstanding, uh, matter with the sick time buyout. It was due on 1/31. I talked to Markounis about it yesterday, I was mentioning to you, you said you had no knowledge of this. Okay, and then, uh, there's a third thing also. We have a lieutenant that had a buyout, he was in our union for 25 years. He retired based on his buyout, he has a family with a wife and three kids, and he hasn't been paid a penny from the buyout, not a penny. All right, so I think you should address that, okay? And, any questions? Anybody disagree with me? That was said? All right, thank you.
Good evening, village board, my name is Billy Recalden, Southern Region President for CSEA, and I surely have plenty of time in Suffolk to see what's going. I was taken aback when I got a phone call about the issue and not paying the overtime, and I also was briefed on the bonds and, and the reason why the trustees said they didn't get enough information. And listening to Mike Cogley over here, I see we have a long way to go to get some trust with both groups to move forward. Uh, and there is no way that you should be playing politics with the livelihood of the employees or the residents of Suffolk, and I think you're starting off with a bad tone. I really would like to see this board move forward. I don't want to go backwards to the times where we had with a, a mayor that we were fighting with constantly, and, uh, over rules and regulations, and especially with this water plant. I can remember back there when no money was spent by, by the mayors, uh, to keep this plant going, and the money wasn't spent in the village to make it look appropriately, because they either wanted to keep a surplus and, and not even pay the employees for overtime time. I remember him changing shifts. So, I'm gonna tell you, you know, if we had to battle, we'll battle, but I don't think that's the way we want to go, and I sure don't want to go that way, but you know what? We're not going through this again, and, you know, we're gonna do everything we can to stop it, and we'll file whatever we had to file to move forward on this. Thank you.
Jim Janitino, I totally agree that anybody that works, whether it's regular time or overtime, should be paid. I don't think anybody in this room has a problem with that. Now, let's lay out a few facts. At last Thursday's workshop meeting, there was a reference to we need to flow the bond. No specifics were brought out at that meeting by the mayor. Why, and if, and when did you know you couldn't pay these employees?
I believe Mr. Janito was at the workshop and, um, did explain all of the bonds and what they were for and why.
I think you're wrong, but we won't argue. I asked you when you knew there wasn't sufficient money to pay the employees?
Uh, Mr. Janito let the entire board know by email, I don't know the exact date, I don't have the email in front of me, that in fact, the cash flow was very serious, and that there was a risk of payroll not being able to be met, therefore, he's, uh, went out to bond counsel and to financial advisors, uh, to get advice, and he came back to the board with his findings.
Fine, I still don't know when you knew.
Mayor, hold just a minute, please.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Janitino, I don't have an exact date, and I would not like to guess, I could probably get...
Okay, I don't want you to guess, that's fine. I cannot understand and repeat your seat, having you as the chief operating officer, the chief financial officer, did not know that we were getting into these dire straits, and to say that these new board members who were not for 66 days should have known, should have voted, you have to fund them the information. You've been on this board for nine years and 66 days. If you don't know how it works, we have a serious problem. You belong. After the meeting on Thursday, now you can answer me when I'm done now.
Excuse me, this is my meeting.
Oh, okay, now it's the people's meeting.
This is my meeting, and what I, this is my meeting with the people.
Okay, go right ahead.
What I say to you is that each and every board member on this board, Mr. Janito has had extensive conversations, has given extensive information that is not news to any one of them, they ran their campaigns unfiscally stressed, so this is no surprise to anyone, and Mr. Janito has done an outstanding job to keep the board apprised of where we needed to go forward to restore the financial health of this village.
I agree that one is an outstanding job.
So please go on.
I will go on. You knew the straits in this village last Thursday at the workshop, if you didn't know it before, which I found hard to believe. You should have called the emergency meeting the following day, supplied the, the bank balances, the bond issues, the bond documents, and had a vote, where everybody would load the intelligent information, the bond would have passed, the people would have got paid, not on Tuesday, and hopefully get the money by Friday on Friday. That's real, all I have to say.
Um, as I stated, Mr. Janitino, um, the, Mr. Janito has been in contact with the board, uh, again, has done an outstanding job in, um, doing his due diligence to make sure that we travel in a, a good direction, um, and the, there is no one on this board that he left out, everyone was very much aware of the financial conditions of the village. Excuse me, Mr. Janitino, if you'd like to come back up to the microphone, that would be fine. Sure.
What does any of that have to do with the fact that you knew or should have known there was not enough money to pay all these people? You should have called your emergency meeting the following day, you would have got a vote if you had the information on finances and the bond issue, and the vote would have been taken, the vote would have passed, and nobody would have had to come out here tonight, they would have gotten their checks.
Uh, once again...
So don't blame board members.
No, I'm not...
You're in charge.
No, Mr. Janitino, I'm not blaming anybody. What I'm telling you is that under the advice of Mr. Janito, who indicated that at the board meeting, he would like to bring these bond resolutions after he was done and was convinced that he had gotten good information from bond council and our financial advisors. Again, at the workshop, he did explain all of it, and again, there was absolutely no questions from the board at that time, or any feeling as though that they needed more information, because Mr. Janito was right there to be able to give it to them. Thank you. Mr. Curly.
Michael Curly, 84 Orange Avenue, Suffolk, New York. Okay. The whole basis of, one of the last elections we had in this village, or probably one of the dirtiest ones I've ever seen, the whole basis of the people who ran was the financially stressed village that we have. So this was not a hidden thing, okay? This was not that we need a long-term plan to adjust things, to sell Orange Avenue, to sell water, to do many different things. As a matter of fact, at the last board meeting, which I missed, Matt Byrne gave a speech where he talked about the stress of the village, okay? This was not some hidden secret, okay? You can go look at the minutes, okay?
I will.
All right? Good, okay? So, and I'm sure you knew, okay? People have known, people have been told, we all knew it. All you had to do was read the Journal News, read the State Report. So this was not a secret. So there was a meeting, there was a meeting on whenever you guys had it, okay? And now all of a sudden, no one knows anything, okay? Well, I understand why Mr. Morris may not know, he was in Florida for two or three weeks, okay? He's away, okay? So it's okay, all right? So you just went, you just cost this village thousands of dollars because you chose not to take that vote, okay? Matter of fact, two people went out at that workshop the other day, right? Tell the people where you were. Have the courage to tell the truth. Two people on that board weren't at that meeting, okay? So you know, it is kind of tough, because they're there to take their paychecks, when you got the responsibility to be at the workshops and the meeting for the people, and even do other things too, okay? So I just watch you in some form berate a man over $325, and maybe technically, he was wrong for not getting a vote first, okay? But you didn't go see him last week. That's right, you were in Florida. While these guys were shoveling shit and shoveling snow at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, okay? You're in a nice warm sun, okay? And God bless you, you have a right to go away, all right? I hope you don't go away anymore this winter, okay? I hope you stay here with us in the cold weather, all right? So there's a problem, you can talk to your constituents, okay? That's pretty important to me, okay? So everyone knows, as I said, about the stressed village, okay? So the $325,000, I'm telling you, with that PBA delegate just said to you, and this other gentleman just said to you, you just cost this village thousands. And I'll show you after the litigation happens, okay? So I would think, let's get on a horse. If you have to have a meeting on Saturday, have it this Saturday, okay? If you would have taken that vote Tuesday, it would have been out of the bond council, you would have had your money quick, and you would have had the payroll done, okay? It would have been in. Go look at history and see how long it takes, all right? Everyone would have got paid. So let's not, this is not imagination. Everyone knows that we have situations, but it's long-term situations, okay? So we have, let's make believe this village has $3 million in debt between water, sewer, and expenses, okay? The value of this village is 40 million. We have a water and sewer department worth tens of millions of dollars, okay? That's what's there right now. So if we have to spend $325, and because he did it late, technically, you're wrong, sir, but it's, in the spirit of what's done, he was right, okay? To protect this village, okay? So while you're there in the sun, enjoying it, you make that vote again. If you make a mistake, just do it. Spend the $325, protect the water of this village. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Beth Barone, I live on Mansfield Place. My husband and I moved to this village about nine years ago with the view that it was an up-and-coming village, very beautiful, and on its way to progress. Since then, consistently, I have seen a board that doesn't work together, continued infighting, continued politics played over and over. I don't see development. I see businesses downtown with, using signs from businesses that were there 10 years ago. I see, you know, the village continuing to go down. So what's important now is the board has to work together. We need to understand as village residents that you have a plan to pay the workers that did the work for us to get us out of the snow the other day. We have additional snow coming. So can somebody answer that question tonight? Do we have a plan to pay the people? Is there no plan?
Well, the mayor is, the mayor is the chief physical officer, so she should respond.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
The mayor is the chief physical officer for this village, and it's her decision.
It's not, it's not my decision, it's the board's decision.
Well, certainly is. I can't sign a check. Nobody on this board can sign a check.
Okay, but I can't sign a check until you approve it.
Mrs. Barone, answer to your question, yes, there is a plan in place, and Mr. Janito has worked, it's taken him over the last eight or nine months to sort out the finances of the village. He's done a thorough investigation as best that he can in his position to address where the shortcomings are, and has gone out to bond council and financial advisors to begin the process of restoring the financial health of the village. The first step in that plan, which he has explained both by email and at workshops and at meetings with various different department heads, that the first step in doing that is to do some short-term borrowing, okay? And what that would entail is two bonds and a run. That was the three, the three things that were supposed to be voted on at the emergency board meeting on Tuesday. Mr. Janito had asked that it be voted on Monday night. Unfortunately, the meeting had to be canceled due to the storm. He contacted me immediately and said, "Mayor, we need to have an emergency board meeting first, then Tuesday morning," which I did. Part of the plan also, which has been explained to the board, is after the short-term borrowing, we had a problem where the treasurer did not complete our 2013 audit, okay? When Mr. Janito came in, he found that the treasurer dropped the ball on the audit as well as the auditors, so he had to pick up where he left off. He had to reconcile bank records for many years. It was a very large undertaking, so it took some time. So Mr. Janito began by recognizing that in the short term, we had a cash flow problem, and that's an immediate concern that we needed to address immediately. And that's where the borrowing came from for the emergency meeting. Going forward from there, what the village, Mike has laid out as part of the plan, is to do long-term borrowing, okay? And it's called a long-term deficit bond. And it's actually something that's very well-received by the state comptroller's office. It's something that much like the county has done, where you put a plan into place over an amount of years, let's say 10 years, and what you take is that short-term borrowing, including, and which would also include the deficit that we have, that, you know, that we're not actually bonding right now. And what you do is you put that, couple that all together. So when you do the long-term borrowing, you'll pay off that short-term borrowing, and now you'll be in a long-term borrowing for 10 years, which allows you now to put a good, sound budget in place going forward. And the great part of the plan is when you're in this deficit bond process over the next 10 years, you have to send in reports to the state comptroller's office, so they know what's going on. It's not as though it's just kind of flying off by its own, but there's kind of some sort of oversight of our plan going out 10 years. So it's not just a treasurer that may or may not have done his job, but it's a treasurer who's going to do his job, and the state comptroller's gonna actually make sure that he or she does. So it's a good plan, where right now, we don't have our budget numbers together. We have just given out our worksheets to the department heads. I've asked Mr. Janito to please sit with the department heads, because I feel as though there's room for some improvement with the way the budget process goes, and the department heads' conception of how to budget properly. Mr. Janito has already implemented many changes, which have really helped. I've had the department heads come to me and say, "This makes more sense, I can budget better." So, you know, we are, we are in a positive, we're going in a very positive direction. The other thing, I have been in talks with the, very serious talks about the possibility of selling our water. I'm looking at our assets, things that we can do to bring in more revenue, you know, so there's a lot of things that are in the works, and I am working very closely with Mr. Janito to ensure that, you know, going forward, we do have a good, financial, sound plan.
Okay, so it's good to see the long-term vision.
Correct.
And hopefully, everybody will work together to resolve that.
Yes, absolutely.
We have a short-term problem that has to be resolved to get everybody through the winter and get the DPW paid. So I am hopeful that you have an alternative that you'll present this evening.
Thank you.
I think you'll hear that, by the way, when you get to number eight on the agenda, which is about the borrowing issues.
Yes.
Yes, I like to say the mayor laid that out very diligently and very right. A lot of counties and towns are doing that with the long-term. One of the things I'm sure this village doesn't want is a financial control board, and I'm sure some of the attorneys know what that is and can explain it. But if I remember right, and somebody was just talking to me again, I believe there was supposed to be a plan in place by the former treasurer. I don't remember his name, but I know he was, you know, he was hired by the previous mayor here. So you know what? There's a lot of things that went wrong, there's a lot of things we had to straighten out, and I think if you look positive, we could do it together and make this right instead of a wrong.
I agree, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? One more?
Good evening, Michael Sanford, Tanning Interstate Street, Suffolk. I just had a couple of questions for the board members, you know, trustee Margunas, trustee Morris. I haven't heard you tell us, what was the reason that no one wanted to vote for this bond? You know, I read things, I read things, everybody has time to tip off the Journal News and tell them what's going on in the village, but as a taxpayer, I want to know what's the reason? If there is one, I'd like to know, I think everybody here would like to know what was the reason for a no vote. And also, my other comment to Mr. Morris was, it's great to beat up Mr. Zwicki over $325, but this is where we get into these problems. Don't do it now, we don't have money. So then when he comes back next year, and he has to take an employee out of work for two weeks to do the 80 hours, and he gives you a $3,000 bill, we're still gonna pay it. So it doesn't seem to make sense to me to keep telling, you know, "Don't do it now, we don't have money," because now this is what we're gonna end up with next year again. So that's it. That's my other comment. I just urge the board maybe to try and work together, because alls I see is, it's been 66 days, and it's quick to point the finger at the mayor and say, "It's her problem for the budget." Okay, then what are we doing to fix it? Instead of playing politics and going to the paper and grinding everything to a hole? Let's, can we get a board that works together and tries to correct the problem and move forward? Thanks.
Okay, would anybody else like to speak? Okay, we will move on with the agenda. Village Quark?
I have nothing, ma'am.
Okay, has nothing. Finance Department, Mike Janito. It's mine? Not at all? At the beginning, yes? You can't hear? Just give us a moment while we have some technical difficulties. Everything still plugged in, are you there, guys? Can you hear, can you hear now? Okay. It was, can you get that? Can you hear that? Okay, let us continue. Mr. Janito, our treasurer, is going to, I do before, before we actually take this vote, I would like to just give you something that was in the paper today, which was incorrect, and I would like to make sure that we go on record as saying that, the Journal News reported, Mr. Margunas is stating that all four of the trustees voted not to, not to vote on the bond resolutions. That is not, not the case. Mr. Byrne did not, was not in favor of not voting on the bonds. So it was just Mr. Margunas, Mr. Morris, and Mr. Hagan who voted together not to go forward and vote for the bond. So I just wanted to make sure that we are clear on where the board stands. Mr. Tomato.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight before you, we have three resolutions that were prepared by our bond council. One is to authorize the issuance of a budget note. One is to authorize the issuance of a revenue deficiency note, and the third one is to authorize the issuance of a sewer revenue anticipation note. Let me explain what all three notes are.
Thank you.
A budget note is a note where it has been determined that when looking at the budget, certain expenditures were not anticipated at the time that the budget was adopted. And as such, we look to bring in some money to cover that deficiency. The second one, a revenue deficiency note, is on the other side of the budget, where certain revenues were indicated in the budget, and those revenues have not been received, and it's unlikely that they may be received by the end of the fiscal year, which is May 31, 2015. And the third note, a sewer revenue anticipation note, we've done that before. These are notes where we have billed residents for sewer, and those revenues are coming in, but we need the cash sooner than the revenue will actually arrive.
Okay, so we will do one at a time. The first is a resolution to authorize the issuance of budget notes in the amount of $600,000.
I have a question.
We have to have a motion and a second, and then we can have discussion. Do I have a motion?
Motion. Second and a motion.
Mr. Margunas, second?
Yes.
Okay. Discussion, go ahead.
Mr. Janito, all these bonds that we were asking for, we discussed them the other day, and you gave us an honest opinion as to why they're necessary. This isn't a problem that originated two weeks ago. It's a problem that originated years ago. And if I'm not mistaken, when we talked about it, we have a cash flow problem because all of our short-term debts keep piling up, and it's eating up the cash. And that's putting us in the hole where we don't have the cash to meet payrolls. These bonds, and I asked you this question at the meeting, and I says, "Aren't we doing the same thing that we've done for years that has led us?" Whether the village wants to hear it or not, you're on the verge of bankruptcy. But I asked you, is this what led us up to this position? And your answer was, yes. It was poor management, poor practices, poor spending, no accountability, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And that's how we came to agree with these bonds. And, and I believe I asked you the question, aren't we just contributing more if we keep doing the same thing? And your answer that time is, really, we have no option. During that discussion, I asked you, how much money, just to, let me set the stage right. I got an email from, so Trish can look it up too, she hasn't got the date, but it's February 2nd, which you sent us all an email advising us that this is a serious problem. It was more serious... It was more serious than when we had previously discussed this a few weeks earlier. There was no mention in that email of the payroll. I'm sorry. We have got to the point where there may not be enough cash to meet the payroll this week. This was on Monday when the village hall was closed, and you told us that you couldn't make that amount, that definite answer because the hall is closed and you couldn't get the answers. The next day, at the meeting, we asked you, do you have, the question came up that we're going to be short. And the question come up, how much are we going to be short? And you told us, we probably can't pay the overtime. And at that time, I asked you, well, wait a minute. Mind you, we still hadn't gotten any dollar figures as to what was in there and what wasn't. This was at nine o'clock in the morning and we didn't get a cash value until 2:30 in the afternoon or so. Long after the meeting. Now you, we, I asked you, I says, we have $646,000 in the water fund, I think it is. Yeah. If we're short $40,000 or $50,000, can't we take it from there? And your answer to me was, and it's in the minutes of the meeting, was, that's not a good idea, that's what got us in trouble in the first place. I'm not an accountant, so I trust your judgment and it makes sense to me completely. It's exactly what got us into the problem. And we discussed then going to long-term financing.
You go, please.
I'm sorry. We discussed going to the longer-term financing. But as of the meeting on the 3rd, at nine o'clock in the morning, the treasurer, the mayor, nobody could tell us how much money was had in this village. How much were we going to be short on payrolls? And when the subject was brought up of moving money from one fund to another to cover the overtime shortfall, that was met with disapproval.
Well, let me just a few things to begin with. First of all, the money or the resolutions that are before you are for notes, not bonds. Notes are short-term debt that's only issued for a period of a year, as opposed to a bond which is typically five, 10, 15, 20 years or more.
Okay.
So I just want to clarify that for everybody here. The second thing is, you mentioned the meeting that took place and that you didn't have the information. I believe that our deputy treasurer was present with a cash balance sheet at that time? She was not present?
She was present, she didn't have a cash balance at that time.
She didn't have an accurate cash balance.
She had to go back and look at the books.
Well, let me explain what I said at that meeting as well. At that meeting, I said that the cash balance in the bank changes on a daily basis, because we're not quite sure what clears or what comes in, so we have daily cash balance sheets, which our deputy treasurer does take on into account on a regular basis. Monday, I received a, and everything was closed, but the deputy treasurer must have come in, because she sent me by email the cash balance sheet for that day, which I distributed to the board. And that showed that we had something like $450,000 in the general fund. And I knew, and we also mentioned that there was a $175,000 payment that was due for health insurance that would be coming out of that money. So short of any unknown revenues that may come in. When I say unknown, it could be something from the state, which sometimes they will send mortgage tax or sales tax or something, without telling us in advance and they just wired in. So I wanted to be as accurate as possible. There was a cash balance sheet that was accurate as of, I believe, the 30th, but may not have been as accurate as we had wanted it to be on the 2nd, to see if anything else was there. So, the question as to whether we could take the money out of the water fund, I said, yes, we could, but it is not a good practice to do that. I didn't say that we wouldn't do it to avoid paying overtime. The one thing that we mentioned about these notes and the importance of them, is to give that short-term borrowing that we need to get us through as much as possible and as far into May 31st, which I also mentioned to the board, we may not even be able to get there with this. That we are going to have to take other dramatic drastic actions to, to help control our costs until that time, and hope that we can somehow get revenues in that will help us survive to May 31. I also mentioned that beyond that date, the village would have at least another tax levy out in June that would bring cash into the village. And as you know, the entire board was aware that the plan is to go through short-term borrowing in the form of a bridge loan, if you will, to get us to the point where we can go to the long-term deficit bonding that the mayor previously mentioned. And we've been working for many weeks with our bond council, financial advisors, and auditors on the proper way to do that, so that we maximize what we can do. And once we stabilize the village finances to the point where we don't have to worry about an emergency shortage of cash, we can then move on, and we will be moving on, to better management in terms of financial decisions and budgets and things like that. One thing that I will say to the entire board here is that I have been keeping the board apprised of the results of what's going on in the village. And I think both trustee Markounis and Morris, you met with me in mid-December, and we went over the finances of the village. At that time, I presented to both of you, and I presented to the other board members as well, copies of the auditors' management or comment letters that came out from the 2011 and 2012 audits, which I understood that the board had not seen prior to me asking them about them. And I was able to get them from the auditors of the village, who said they had sent them to the village, but somehow they never got to the board. So, that I share with the board to explain beyond myself, an objective viewpoint that was done a couple of years prior to me even coming in here, that talked about the issues before the village back then. The other thing that I did mention to the village, to the board, over this period of time that I've been here, is that I do believe that the problems seriously started to begin in 2010. In that year, that was the first year that the village borrowed revenue anticipation notes for water and sewer. What are those revenue anticipation notes? It means, even though you budgeted to have money this year to work with, the cash isn't coming in, and your spending is beyond your cash coming in. So you have to borrow ahead to next year's revenues, or the revenues that'll come in in the next period. That's not a good practice, and if you have to do it, you hope to put in the budget for the next year a way to pay that off, so you can then get back on your feet. So yes, it's accumulative deficits that have been rolling for years. And I also explained to the board that, over those, that course of those years, that the money that was there, that was slowly being driven away from the water fund, the general fund was making up for. And as of 2012, the water and sewer fund owed the general fund $1.2 million. And being that they were borrowing money ahead, there was no way they were going to be able to pay that back to the general fund. So imagine that you're starting off each year in a deeper and deeper hole. And I'm not, I wasn't here for the conversations between the treasurer, the former treasurer and the board, or anyone else for that matter. So I don't know what took place in discussions, or whether it was mentioned. One thing that was mentioned was a plan that was submitted to the state comptroller's office, which nobody in village hall had a copy of. And I asked the state comptroller's office for that plan. And the comment from the state comptroller representative to me was, it wasn't something that we accepted because it really is not comprehensive at all. And they did send it to me, and essentially, it's a spreadsheet showing over a period of time, by raising some fees, the village would hope to get back their money. But the state comptroller did not find it to be a comprehensive or workable plan. The plan that we will develop over time is going to be a plan that is much more comprehensive and better structured. What we have to do, and by the way, I'm going to start by saying this. I was born and raised in the village of Suffolk. My mother was born and raised in the village of Suffolk, and my grandparents came here and lived here. And I have to say that my sister still lives here in Suffolk. I own a house in Suffolk as well. I happen to rent it out to two really great tenant families, and we keep it in good shape. I love Suffolk, I always have. It's my second home, even though I only live a couple of miles away. And I have a lot of interest in Suffolk. So what I say comes from the heart. Suffolk, as one of the other people that came up and spoke, it's a beautiful village, always has been, and I believe it always will be. I'll start with that. Suffolk has been through these wains and waxes, that's true. I started my career in government in the village of Suffolk as a part-time treasurer in 1984. Back then, the general fund was in a deficit. The water fund had problems and the sewer fund had problems. And the mayor at that time, Joseph Savaris, called me up and said, would you give us a hand? And I started as a part-time treasurer between him and the next mayor, which is Leonard Scar, and the next mayor was George Parnas. Between those mayors, the village came back on its feet financially. I have to say that I don't think it was ever as bad as it is today, in terms of the finances. The services, the departments, and the people are great, and the residents are great, and the village is great. It will continue to be greater and grow better. But we have to take this village, at this point, and buckle down and do what we have to do. The whole point of bringing forth the budget notes and the revenue deficiency notes was simply to make sure that our workers do get paid, and that we're not going to have that problem again next week, as well as our vendors that give us the proper goods and services that deserve to be paid for what they've delivered. So this plan, and I did mention it to the board, is a plan to get us past this hump that we need to get to, get us a little breathing room, buy some more breathing room till May, and then go for the long-term deficit financing. Now let me explain what that is, so that everybody here understands it. Long-term deficit financing is not unlike what Rockland County did. We are in this rolling deficits that came forward, and I'm going to tell you that were at least $2.5 million in the hole. It may be greater than that. One of the reasons why it's so difficult to come up with the right number at this time is that, when I was asked to come in at the end of July, I found that the audit for 2013, which was May 31st of 2013, was not yet completed at the end of July of 2014. In fact, the auditors were probably halfway through it, at that, the auditors at that time. So you're coming in when you really should be starting an audit for 2014, having to pick up 2013, and work on what's in 2014, and then, as we discovered, several things weren't done throughout the year, which are critical to making sure all the information you have is accurate and complete. Things like bank reconciliations that should have been done, that weren't done from June of 2013. So all of these things combined with what I found to be a series of very difficult-to-understand accounting entries, not that there was anything illegal that I saw, but just what I would say was not the best practice of keeping set of books. And the board deserved, whatever board was on at that time, deserved to have monthly reports, cash reports, and other reports. Bank reconciliation should have been done on a monthly basis, and everything should have been reconciled monthly, so that you knew where you were at any given point in time. So when we had the meeting the other day, and I made it clear to the board, that because of the bank reconciliations that we were still catching up on, we were depending upon cash balance sheets, which is showing what cash is in the banks, and using our best judgment to what is outstanding that might clear quickly, to understand how much money we had. And at that point in time, we, we understand that we had maybe about $275,000 total in the general fund to meet our payroll, which runs about $225,000 on a regular basis. So that's how tough and difficult it is. And the idea of doing that short-term borrowing again was just to get us that breathing room. Now we're going to get there. It's going to require everybody to work hard at it, it's going to require everybody to have an understanding. I know the departments are doing a decent job of controlling costs. What we have to do is get even tighter than that. We have to look at things that do not have to get done no matter what, and save our money for the things that absolutely have to get done. We have to protect the public out there, we have to make sure the streets are clear, we have to make sure that if there's a fire, that our fire department can respond to it adequately, with the right coverage and the right tools. All of that has to be done. What we have to avoid is anything that we don't absolutely need to do. So that's where we are in terms of things happening, and why, this was brought before the board, and trust me, I did not do this on my own. I had a lot of consultation with our village attorney, Terry Rice, with our bond council, with our financial advisors, and our auditors to try to lay the groundwork on where to go and how to get there. And I have 30 years of experience in government, and I feel I'm pretty well qualified to handle what I do, but I'm always out there for a helping hand from someone like our bond council, who are experts in municipal finance law. I am not an expert in that area. I know a lot about it, but they're the ones that are going to tell us the best way to do things legally. And then, of course, we have our auditors, who have a vast, a large regional firm, that have a vast set of years of experience and knowledge, and we use them and their experience with other communities to give us the best advice. So again, we will get there, but the first step in this process is these budget notes, the revenue deficiency notes, and that revenue anticipation note. And one of the things that will happen, yes, we will borrow this money, it's got to be paid off next year, but part of that plan, as was discussed with the board, is that these funds would be paid off with that long-term deficit financing that we're going to get. So it's like taking a short-term loan so you can buy a house, and then getting a mortgage to cover that short-term loan, and have enough years to pay it off.
Mike, do you, do you have a sense how much the water fund owes the general fund at this point?
At this point, I would say that it's probably close to $1 million. And, and yes, we can take some of that money from the water fund to pay it. We don't have an objection to doing that. What we want to or try to avoid is taking too much out of the water fund or sewer fund, which still have their own expenses to carry forth to the end of the year, the end of the year being May 31 for us.
Does, does moving money over for that purpose, for example, this week's payroll and overtime, does that require separate board approval?
No, that would not.
Okay, thank you.
How would that money be moved over?
I'm sorry?
How would that money be moved over?
Well, because, the reason why, the reason why the water fund owes the general fund money, is because the general fund paid for some of the bills of the water fund.
No, I understand that.
And then the water fund owes it to the general fund, and, yeah.
But if you wanted to move the money, if you wanted to move $100,000 from the water fund to the general fund, what is the process for that?
The process is that I simply tell the deputy treasurer to move the money, and she does it.
So this whole issue, what I, I guess what I'm bringing up is, we could have avoided this whole issue of not paying the people and risking these labor law violations, had we simply taken $50,000 from the water fund and moved it over.
Well, if you're talking about running the general fund down to zero, yes, but you don't want to be there either.
$50,000 or more?
$50,000.
Well, let's, let's put it this way, as I just said, the general fund had $450,000. You take away $175,000 for the healthcare bill, you're left with, what, $250,000 or so, roughly? And your payroll is going to be that much plus another 50, so you add the 50 to it, take it away, and you have zero in the general fund to pay anything else.
No, I understand that, but...
The water fund, the water fund, what did the water fund have, what does the water fund have in it? $600,000?
About $600,000.
What was the outstanding overtime payment for payroll to be met, for the men?
They didn't do it.
So they don't know how much the overtime is actually. And that's what we were alluding to, that there was a possibility to try to take the money from the water fund to pay overtime.
But I, I don't think the board is getting it. What we have to, what we have to understand here, I mean, with all due respect, what we have to understand here, is that we're talking about running on air in the general fund. And if you weren't going to vote for these at this meeting, were we going to wait till March when we have other bills coming? Every two weeks, we have a payroll, and we pay our vendors throughout the month, we wouldn't have the money to make payments.
Where were you going to pay the payroll from?
I'm sorry?
This week's payroll is paid from where? The general fund?
It would be paid from the general fund, and some of it from the water and some from the sewer.
Right, they would pay for their own. But the entire payroll for the general fund would have come out of the balance of the money in the general fund.
That is correct.
Right? And we thought we had enough money to pay the payroll. The only money that was really seemed to be in question was the overtime.
I get back to the same issue, if you want to run your, would you run your bank account to zero?
Well, you're not running the bank. If you took, you have $626,000 in the water fund, and if you took $50,000 from that and put it into the general fund, which it's owed anyway, you would now have, what, $575,000 in the water fund, and we wouldn't be facing lawsuits here.
That was a point...
I mean, one of the excuses, one of the answers I heard from some of the people here was, well, we couldn't get paid the overtime, and they couldn't move the water money from the water fund, because you guys didn't pass the bond.
No, I, I can't answer for somebody that said you can't move it.
I said it came from workers, which is not, not right. Or they were misinformed, you know, one of the two.
Well, I don't know where that came from.
Without the information, just let me, let me interject here, is that with all of the information that we're hearing over the course of a few days, which you provided, and you, I commend...
and you, I commend you, you're doing a great job, and we are trying our hardest to understand the finances, and it is very complex. It's not like balancing a checkbook. But when you understand that there's a balance of $600,000 in a water fund, and I don't know, we don't even know how much overtime is due, but we still don't know because, I guess, they didn't calculate it, is that correct? That, I don't know what to say. There's $600,000 there, and the emergency during the snowstorm and calling the meeting in the next morning and springing it on the board that we don't have the money to pay seems a little unreasonable to me without all the detail and information, which I have received and requested throughout the day on Tuesday and Wednesday through my treasurer, Mr. Janito, Barbara Cudias, the deputy treasurer, and whoever else helped us out throughout the village.
Ms. Markounis, can I ask a question? So you were not aware that the cash flow was bad enough that there was a possibility that we were not going to make payroll?
No, I was not clear, clearly aware of that circumstance because I was not provided hard, fast, fat figures.
Were you at the workshop?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Janito stated at the workshop that, in fact, this bond, this budget notes were necessary in order to ensure that we could make payroll. Were you at that workshop?
It was maybe or might squeak, sneak through.
We possibly could squeak through, leaving our general fund at zero.
And then during the regular meeting, the emergency meeting that I believe was not posted to the public.
It was an emergency meeting, Mr. Markounis?
Was it posted on the website? I mean, that's a whole nother subject.
All right, you know what? We're back, let's get back to the vote. We're voting.
The trustees portion.
There's no trustees portion. Mr. Markounis, Mr. Janito, no, it's not. We're on the finance portion.
Well, I have another question for the treasurer.
Okay.
During the meeting we had with you on, yesterday.
Could you talk to the microphone?
During the meeting we had with you yesterday. It's difficult. When you get old, it happens. We, we asked you if we passed the bonds today, the notes, today, would we have the money by Friday? And your answer was, no, not really. It has to go out to the banks.
Yeah, my response to that, let me, let me answer your question, and let me clarify one other thing. Mr. Markounis, you mentioned that you first heard about this stuff on the emergency meeting on Tuesday. I've been letting the board know about the severe financial crisis we've been in, and I, since our meeting back in December, I sat with you and trustee Moore specifically and spoke about how severe our financial situation was, and that I had even mentioned that I was kind of surprised and shocked when I came in here end of July, as I mentioned, and it was only September, and the deputy treasurer mentioned to me that we were running short of cash, which I found hard to understand, being that we collect $9 million of taxes in June. So I think the board was well aware that we were in pretty severe financial straits, and it was just a matter of time before we came to the end of that rope. Now, to talk about what we did say at the meeting and when we would have the money, what I did say to you was that if you vote for it today, we may not get it by Friday. Our first act would be to poll the banks to see if they were willing to bid on borrowing money from us, or letting us borrow money from them, I'm sorry. And as I also mentioned to the board, the last time we went out to do that, the banks refused to bid on our money. They wouldn't lend us money, our local banks. We had to go through our financial advisor, and as a matter of fact, in speaking with the financial advisor about budget notes and deficiency notes, the financial advisor said, you probably shouldn't waste your time with the banks because it's highly unlikely you're going to vote on this, and you're probably going to have to go through a negotiated sale, which is not a bad thing, but is something that makes it happen quicker than, than putting it out to a bid, competitive bid, which you may have to wait a couple of weeks for. So I said I didn't know how quickly it would come in, but the sooner that we voted on this, the sooner the process would begin. And as I mentioned, yes, I was advised by the deputy treasurer, he could probably squeak by the payroll, but we were going to need that money rather soon. So, yes, maybe you could have made it through Friday, well, I mean, through the payroll, but then you're going to have a zero cash balance in your general fund, and you're going to have to pay other people. You're going to want this money in as soon as possible. That's why we were, and it wasn't called an emergency meeting because we needed the money right away, it was on for the regular meeting. The regular meeting had to be canceled because of the weather. And because of that, when I found out it was canceled, I did call the mayor and said, one thing we have to do is get these budget notes voted on, because if we don't get that done, it's too much time that's going to roll by before we get the money in. And the mayor did call the emergency meeting. And that's why it was an emergency meeting as opposed to being, waiting another month for a regular meeting.
Well, it would have been one day.
I'm sorry?
It would have been one day waiting.
No, it wouldn't have because...
That wasn't what I was informed.
Tuesday is, Tuesday is the day that you would be able to let the public know when the meeting was rescheduled for, and we're at Wednesday, so it would have been two more days. And quite frankly, Mr. Morris...
The Monday was closed, we had the meeting on Tuesday, and we're here today.
No, no, we would have waited till tonight, but quite frankly, as I indicated to you in the emails, when you immediately asked me to please have a Tuesday or Wednesday because you were leaving for, back to Florida on Thursday, I moved around my commitments to accommodate you for tonight. So quite frankly, in my mind, the meeting was going to be on Thursday.
I believe that move, though, was, was requested. I think I initiated the request due to the fact...
On behalf, on behalf of Mr. Byrne, Mr. Hagan, yourself, and Mr. Morris.
And what was my main concern? My main concern that day was not the resolutions because I was not fully made aware that these bond, note resolutions were going to be voted on in my email communication.
Okay, you know what? We're going off subject, so we're back to the resolution to authorize the issuance of the budget notes. If nobody has any further questions, I'd like to get to a motion to pass the, to accept and authorize the issuance of the budget notes.
I think you have a motion in a second already.
Yeah, we need a roll call vote. I need a roll call vote. Okay, Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Markounis?
Yes.
Mr. Byrne?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried. The second is, the resolution to authorize issuance of revenue deficiency notes, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Markounis?
Yes.
Mr. Byrne?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried. Resolution to authorize sewer revenue anticipation notes?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Markounis?
Yes.
Mr. Byrne?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried.
Mr. Geo, could I just, as we approach payroll for this week, can you just advise the board if money is being transferred from water to cover, just how much that was? And it doesn't have to be known now, but at what point you do know, if we could just be advised, that's all.
Yeah, if you could just keep us updated on the movement and how you're going, how the bids are going, or whether we're going to the financial consultants, or how we're going forward to come to support.
I certainly will, Mayor.
I'm really talking about this week's payroll. The rest, of course, we want to know also, but...
Right. Yeah, we'll certainly keep you advised of this week's payroll, and as far as everything going forward with it, though, it's certainly, this is going to have to be a very active back and forth between the village board, myself, my office, and other department heads in the village.
I may make a suggestion. I believe there should be some type of committee in place between the members of the board and the finance department.
Yeah, Mike, when you're ready to, when you have a kind of a picture of how, how we're doing, I can call a special board meeting, not a problem.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Markounis just recommended a committee.
Yeah, fine, no, I have a committee in a second.
A finance committee?
Some type of committee or liaison between the treasurer's department and the...
No, I don't, I don't think that that's appropriate. I can think the whole entire board should be, as Mike has continued to do, send the board all the information at all times. I think this is, we're in a crisis right now, and I think that the board needs to know as a whole what's going on, as he has continued this practice since he's taken over as treasurer. It's my feeling.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't get someone on the tape because of...
Mike has, I think there's one question.
I think, Mike, that they're wondering about their overtime.
Will we be getting the overtime checks this week?
The payroll's already done. You know what, Scott? Can you just give them a day to digest this? Like, give them till tomorrow to get back in the office? Yeah. Can you give them a day to get back into the office tomorrow so they can start moving?
If, if the overtime is not paid this week, we have no choice but to go to litigation against the village.
We always have a choice.
We don't, do not have a choice on this matter.
Okay, Scott, let's hear, let's hear from Mike.
The treasurer's office will make sure that they have their full pay.
Thank you.
Including overtime. Yes, that's full pay, that's regular pay and overtime, yes.
Okay, well, it's done here. Trustees don't have anything. I do have something. Is Mike Stark still here?
Trustees, excuse me?
Yeah, I asked the trustees if they had anything at the workshop to put on, they said no.
We don't have to put it on the agenda.
Yeah, anything new you have to put on the agenda.
We're going to have new business?
New business, no, new business is, is discussed at the workshop and then put on to the agenda.
This is new business after, after the workshop that we developed, that I developed.
Right, so you bring it to the next workshop, and then that's when we discuss it.
Terry, can I have an opinion on that, please?
Rest in the practice, you know, you can always, by motion, add something to the agenda. The practice has been, it was worked out under prior mayors that if the trustee has something to bring up, they bring it up at the workshop meeting, and then it goes on the regular agenda.
With the situation that we, we...
That's prior practice.
Okay.
But looking at the CCOM manual, that's not what that says.
Okay, let me explain, Mr. Morris. It gives the benefit to all of the trustees to be able to hear and to work on whatever the new business is that the particular board member is bringing to the board. To bring it to a board meeting without discussion at the board at a workshop, which is what workshops are for, is, is counterproductive because you can sit here now and go back and forth on something that the other board members don't have any information on. So in the fairness to all the board members, we bring it to the workshop and work on it at the workshop, and then come to the board meeting and not have a pushing and shoving match and arguing that I didn't know and I didn't have information and you didn't give me time. We come to the board meeting educated and intelligent.
Okay, that's an acceptable reason, but, Mr. Rice, can you elaborate on, on the resolution or the issue that's at hand here?
What resolution?
Not, not the resolution, excuse me, just the, the new business items to be presented.
As I said, I said what the prior practice had been, I said an agenda can always be amended by motion.
So can we make a motion now to amend the agenda?
Sure, absolutely, Mr. Markounis. Again, not working together as a board, go, go right ahead. It's just, you know, adding on to the, you know, exactly what you've, you've portrayed to date. So please, by all means, go ahead and make a motion.
I make a motion to amend the agenda for this evening's meeting.
Okay.
I second.
Wait, 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 you got, you got to say in the motion what you're adding. That's the point of it.
Okay. I'm making a motion to amend the agenda to add that the village board retains special counsel to provide legal services to the village and to counsel the board, whereas the board has reviewed the credentials and backgrounds of several attorneys and/or law firms with municipal experience, and whereas the board is in receipt of the proposal from Amy Neely, Esquire, February 3rd, 2015, to provide the above services to the village. And whereas the board of trustees has reviewed said proposal and recommends its acceptance based upon qualifications and experience of Ms. Neely. Now for their, be it resolved by the village board, of the village of suffering is hereby authorized to retain the services of Amy Neely, Esquire 103, Van Houten Fields, West Nyack, New York, to serve as special counsel at the rate of $200 an hour. Be it further resolved, be it further resolved that Ms. Neely shall provide services on an as-needed basis, but in no event shall such fees exceed $4,000 a month or 20 hours without further authorization from the board.
Is the board required to document this in my PRs?
Okay, so I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Wow. Mr. Markounis?
Yes.
Mr. Byrne?
No. I think, I think we should, I, I understand the, the motion. I just think that, given the nature of what we've been through this evening, and in the interest of, of moving along smoothly, that perhaps a workshop would be a good idea, but that's the only reason I would vote no.
And I vote no, the motion is carried, and we have another bill on our hands, folks.
I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to amend the, the agenda, and the purpose of the amendment is that...
Excuse me, excuse me. One of the trustees is speaking.
We're making a motion to adjust the agenda to include, we'd like to curtail the sale, the purchase, rather, of the VFW building that was previously agreed upon but has not been completed. We're making a motion to discontinue any attempts to purchase the property and notify the village attorney to cease any actions concerning this.
Well, I believe there's a signed contract. You know, if you do that, you may be open, you know, since nobody's discussed this with me, I'm giving, doing this by the seat of my pants, you may be open to breach contract action or a specific performance action to compel the village to complete it.
Well, when did we have a closing date for the property?
We don't have a closing date because it was subject to the, the VFW obtaining approval from the, it was subject to the VFW obtaining approval from the attorney general's office as is required for any not-for-profit. It's my understanding from their attorney that they recently received that.
So you do have a signed contract?
I believe so.
We've assessed that thing. Okay, fine.
Okay, are we done with additions to the agenda? Any other additions?
Now I have another additions. After the amended, do you amend again or no?
Oh, you know what? At this point, you know, you don't work with me, just bring it on.
Okay.
I mean, you know.
This resolution is a resolution of the village of suffering requesting a comprehensive review of the New York State Financial Restructuring Board for Local Governments. Whereas pursuant to New York State Local Finance Law 1600, New York State has credited a financial restructuring board in any county, city, except New York City, town or village deemed fiscally eligible, a fiscally eligible municipality by the FRB may request by resolution of its governing board with the concurrence of its chief executive. A comprehensive review from the FRB, and whereas the village has been deemed fiscally eligible municipality within the meaning of New York State Local Finance Law 160.05, whereas if the FRB decides to undertake a comprehensive review of the village, the FRB may request any information necessary to understand the village's finances and operations, and based on this information, the FRB would make recommendations to the village on improving its fiscal stability, management, and the delivery of public services.
And how much, what is the cost on this? I'm sorry, Mr.?
Can, if I finish reading, I can...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Whereas the FRB can identify cost-saving measures, recommend consolidation and functions or agencies, and make available to municipalities grants the necessary loans and implement reforms, and whereas the FRB could offer grants and/or loans through the local government performance and efficiency program for undertaking certain recommendations, and if the village agrees to undertake the FRB's... to undertake the FRB's recommendations, it would be contractually bound to fulfill those terms in order to receive such aid. Now for be it resolved that the village, the village board of the village of suffering hereby resolves to submit an application requesting a comprehensive review by the Financial Restructuring Board, subject to the concurrence of the mayor of the village as set forth below. Be it further resolved that any commitment to apply for grants and/or loans or to undertake the FRB recommendations will require further village board authorization for any such grants, loans, or recommendations at future date, and be it resolved that the mayor is directed to provide a written response to the board of trustees within 10 days of the date of this resolution, either concurring with the request for a comprehensive review by the FRB, or stating that she does not concur with the request for a comprehensive review by the FRB. If the mayor fails to respond within 10 days of this resolution, the mayor shall be deemed not to concur with the proposed request for the comprehensive review. Be it further resolved, the mayor concurs with the request for all comprehensive review by the FRB, the mayor is authorized to execute and all documents and instruments necessary to fulfill the village's request for and his obligations under the Financial Restructuring Board's comprehensive review. And be it further resolved, the village treasurer shall be designated as the primary municipal contact in any, any request for a comprehensive review by such FRB, and shall arrange for the submission of all materials necessary to fulfill such requests. Be it further resolved, this is a resolution, shall take effect, in fact, immediately, dated February 4, 2015.
Okay. You know, I just want to tell you before that you, again, you know, go over my head and, and pass something that I don't think that you have looked into the ramifications of. We have, you have not even passed this through our attorney, so you may be setting us up again for another, you know, legal battle. So I, in fact, am not in favor of anyone bringing to this board anything that does not pass through our attorney, and I would certainly not be in any way, shape, or form ready to take any action on such until our attorney has looked at it and, and has made sure that legally we are acting appropriately.
Well, there is a 10-day window.
Well, if I, if I.
How could you not bring it to the attorney?
Yeah, I mean, I can't render.
Legal documentation.
I can't render any interpretation whatsoever as far as the ramifications of, of this, you know, hearing this for the first time tonight.
I just brought this to the board's attention, I, I am bringing it to the public's attention, that there are other means out there for financially restructuring and getting help from the state of New York.
Okay.
And I believe that the finances are in such, and we are eligible due to the fact that we are still the most fiscally stressed village in the state of New York, and we automatically qualify. We do have 10 days to explore it. Terry, Mr. Rice, if you, if you wish to, with, along with the mayor, and it's another avenue for us to stabilize our finances in the village.
How much does it cost?
It's free to, it's, it's a free program. It's offered through the state. They offer you grants and loans, they offer you advice.
Okay. Mr. Markounis, you making a motion?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Markounis?
Yes.
Mr. Byrne?
Yes.
I vote no. Motion is carried. Okay, is there anything else? Any other surprises?
Why, why do you find it necessary to pair sarcastic remarks?
Why? Because.
Nobody pairs sarcastic remarks when you.
Is there any other surprises?
Yeah, you're paying these guys like you should.
Okay, nothing else? I would like to go on to my portion. The first thing on my agenda is the appointments. Five-year term member Charles Barone.
Member of what?
Zoning Board of Appeals.
Terry, can I ask you, since all the people that have been suggested by the mayor are , remain as holdovers, is it required, there to be a vote at every board meeting?
It's not required to be.
Okay.
But I'd like them to have permanent positions as they are, you know, working for the village at a very small salary and give a lot of their time. So I think the decent thing to do is to appoint them as they continue to work for this village. Do I have a motion?
Confirmation.
Okay, a confirmation, motion to confirm. Okay, chairman, one-year term, Henry Sussman, holdover. Alternate two-year term, David Hamilton, holdover. Planning board member, five-year term, Paul Stanbridge, holdover. Chairman, one-year term, Paul Godansky. That will be a holdover. I would like to appoint my deputy mayor, I'd like to appoint Matthew Byrne for the deputy mayor of the village of suffering.
I wish, Mayor, that you had approached me before tonight rather than, that I not hear this for the first time, quite frankly.
It's not a good feeling, huh, Matt?
No, it's not.
It's not?
It is not, yeah.
No, it's not.
And I just think it's, would be better if I'd heard before, but I would just, I would just, if I could defer to the next meeting.
Sure, absolutely. Okay, the next thing I would like to do is, I received a letter from Governor Andrew Cuomo.
Mayor, I'm sorry, just, I didn't mean to interrupt, but in the event that I opted to accept the designation, it would be without the additional stipend, whatever it might be, an extra.
$500.
$500?
Hey, every penny.
I would decline it if that, if, if, if in fact I choose to accept.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I received a letter from our governor, Andrew Cuomo. Dear Mayor Beto, I want to thank you for your assistance during the November storm in Western New York. Together, we continued the great tradition of New Yorkers coming together in times of need, and I will remain grateful for your partnership. Your contribution were invaluable to our efforts to respond to one of the worst snowstorms hit in the region in years, and I can't thank you enough for your generosity. You are a tremendous asset to New York State, and we're fortunate to have your commitment, leadership, and positive example. Warmest regards, best wishes, Andrew Cuomo. This does not belong to me, this belongs to the suffering fire department, so. Chief? I'm going to let the board sit, and I'm going to give this to you to do as you see fit. I wish I could break it in half, but I can't. But I want the fire department to have that commendation, and I thank you again from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Someone's motion.
Do I have a second?
Set.